On the wall, 7:00 PM. Heavenly Father, we thank you for our many blessings, including the right and freedom to meet this evening on this glorious day, so that our voices may be heard. We ask for your strength, guidance, and wisdom, and that we treat all with dignity and respect. In your son's name, amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you very much. We have a quorum this evening. Announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Wanted to bring to your attention a community meeting. This is actually a property that was just subject to a community meeting. It's called Franklin's Crossing in the Lee Hill District. And their original proposal was for single-family homes, and at this point, they are now proposing an assisted living facility instead. So they had actually submitted a rezoning application. They've now withdrawn that, and they're starting the process again with this assisted living facility. The property is located at the end of River Meadows Way, and the community meeting is Thursday, May 10th, at 7:00 PM at the Fredericksburg Agricultural Fairgrounds. And, again, that's in the Lee Hill District. The second item I wanted to bring to your attention is that the Planning Commission had requested that I set up a tour of a solar energy facility, and so I have set that up with Louisa County for the White House facility there. It's a Dominion facility. It's been in operation for a little over a year now. And, so we just need to firm up details related to that. The tour is scheduled for next week, Wednesday morning, May the 9th. We plan to leave the front parking lot of this building at about 8:10 and return about 1:00 PM. At your places is an agenda and a list of the representatives that have agreed to meet with us for both Louisa County and Dominion Energy. So we'll travel there, leaving at about 8:15. We'll meet up at the Louisa County Building, talk to the representatives, and then after that, go over to the White House site for a tour, and then return back here by about 1:00. That's the same day as the SCC hearings for the S-Power Solar Energy Facility case. So, that begins at 2:00, and then, so that we would be back in time for that afternoon hearing, if you're interested in observing any of the SCC hearing. I do have a sheet here that I'd just like to send around. If everybody could just confirm whether you will attend and whether you will drive yourself, because the next thing I need to do is figure out the transportation aspect of it. So I'm just going to pass this around. Thank you. Okay. And then the last item is just to remind the Planning Commission of the special meeting with the Board of Supervisors to discuss the comprehensive plan, and that's on May 22nd at 6:00 PM.
Anything else?
That's it.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, review and approval of the minutes of April 4, 2018. I trust everybody's had a chance to review. Any comments, questions? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to approve.
So move.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. I don't believe there's any unfinished business. We'll move on to public hearing rezoning case R-17-0013. Patrick.
Thank you for the introduction, Mr. Chairman. This case is a proposed rezoning. The rezoning is proposed by Spectrum Partner Investments, LLC, and is called Roseland. I have a few brief remarks. I know that the applicant is also present and has a PowerPoint presentation of their own. The applicant is proposing to rezone just over an acre of property from Residential 1 to Mixed Use 2 with proffers, in order to allow for the development of 14 townhomes. There are six total parcels requested to be rezoned. All of the properties are located within the primary development boundary and are identified for mixed-use development per the comprehensive plan. Staff is recommending approval of this rezoning with proffers dated April 9th, 2018. The properties are located on Hudgens Road, approximately 560 feet southeast of the signalized intersection of Route 1 and Hudgens Road, and about 800 feet from the intersection of Lafayette Boulevard with Hudgens Road. All of the properties constituting the proposed redevelopment site are presently zoned R1. There's an abutting car dealership to the northwest, Zone C3. Another car dealership located across the street to the northeast, also Zone C3. A office structure housing the Central Virginia Housing Coalition is located abutting the site to the northeast and is zoned Office 1. And three single-family homes abut the site to the southwest, all zoned R1. To provide some context, the top photo is of one of these, depicts the subject site. Currently on the property right now is only one single-family dwelling that is proposed to be removed. The bottom photo is a view of the frontage along the subject property. The top photo on this slide depicts, it basically is viewing down Hudgens Road. I took this photo across the street from the subject parcel. The fencing that you see is between Hudgens Road and an additional parking lot that's used by Radley Chevrolet. The bottom photo is viewing towards Route 1, displaying two car dealerships, and in distance, you can make out the traffic light that lies at the corner of Route 1 and Hudgens Road. These photos are taken from on the subject property. The top photo displays the three single-family homes abut the property to the southwest, and the bottom photo is a view from the subject property looking towards the Sheehy Toyota to the northwest. The generalized development plan provided by the applicant depicts a 14-town home development with access provided by Hudgens Road. If approved, the proposal is estimated to generate approximately 82 additional vehicles per day. Hudgens Road is estimated to move approximately 1,500 vehicles per day presently. The red highlights depict internal and frontage sidewalks that are proposed by the applicant. The frontage sidewalk will be dedicated to VDOT within a 10-foot right-of-way. The two additional internal sidewalks will be privately maintained, along with the internal roads. An interparcial connection is proposed to the office building to the northeast, and the Highway Corridor Overlay District overlays a small corner of the subject site depicted on your screen in orange. Each of the townhouses is proposed to have an internal garage, and each townhouse will have its own driveway which can accommodate another vehicle. A total of 10 parking spaces are being constructed to accommodate guests. The area depicted in green is proposed by the applicant. It is a modified transitional screen 1, consisting of an internal eight-foot-high fence. By internal, I mean the fence is on the inside of the landscaping. The modified transitional screen 1 consists of that eight-foot-high fence, which is depicted on the screen before you, and an additional eight-and-a-half feet of landscaping external to the fence. The planting area is proposed to be planted with one large evergreen and one medium evergreen every 20 feet. The fence is proposed to be constructed out of wood with concrete-capped brick columns every 10 feet. The applicant has also proposed voluntarily to run this fence line down the northwest property line adjacent to the car dealership. Apart from the modification to the transitional screen, two additional modifications are necessary. First, the mixed-use zoning code only provides for a limited selection of street types. Of those types, there are none that allow for 90-degree parking spaces accessing the street. Now, staff notes that the T-style roadway providing access to these townhomes is to be privately maintained and unlikely to serve to establish any future street connection. Staff has no objection to the applicant's use of the proposed 90-degree parking onto their privately maintained street. Secondly, the build-to zone within the Mixed Use 2 district requires the front of structures be within a 5- to 25-foot build-to zone of the front property line. Because the streets are proposed to be retained and privately maintained, the sidewalk will also be privately maintained, therefore it will not be in the right-of-way. The applicant requests that the county recognize that although the sidewalk lies outside of the right-of-way, it nonetheless contributes to the urban form to which the mixed-use code aspires to create, and staff agrees. From a transportation perspective, the impacts of this proposed project are estimated to be minor. The proposed development is estimated to generate approximately 82 vehicles a day, and as I mentioned earlier, Hudgens Road already moves about 1,500. Both of the intersections, however, are functioning at a level of Service E, and Hudgens itself is functioning at a level of Service D during the AM and E during the PM peak. This is largely attributable to the use of the roadway for commercial purposes by neighboring businesses and by cut-through traffic to and from Route 1 and Lafayette. Per the Department of Motor Vehicles, there were no reported collisions on Hudgens or at either intersection from 2015 to 2017. Apart from the sidewalk and the right-of-way designation along the front of the property, there are no other transportation improvements proposed. The Roseland project was analyzed by staff and found generally consistent with the land use, public facilities, historic resources, and natural resources elements. Capacity concerns were observed on Fire Station 4 and Massaponics High School resulting from the project. However, there are no current projects identified in the CIP for which legal cash proffers could be collected. However, contributions were proposed by the applicant for a county-wide fire and rescue training facility and for five improvements to the county park system. The applicant's financial documentation notes that the townhomes are proposed to range from 1,800 to 2,200 square feet and are estimated to be priced at $250,000 per unit. The applicant's fiscal analysis estimates Roseland to generate approximately $2,060 annually. The county, however, has its own model. The county's model indicated that the project would result in an annual deficit of approximately $22,557, based on the average assessed values of Lakeside and Lafayette Crossing developments. By that, I mean, when the county uses our model, we look for comparables. In this case, those two comparables were Lakeside and Lafayette Crossing, and we use the average assessed value of every townhouse in those two developments as our input into the model. A discrepancy is commonly observed between these two figures. The applicant's fiscal model factors in off-site tax generation not generally accounted for in the county's model. The applicant has submitted signed proffers, and they include conformance with the GDP, that 14 townhomes will be constructed with no accessory departments, that rear decks, if any, will be restricted to the first floor. They've proffered HOA covenants and restrictions that would be placed to maintain value, uniformity, and common maintenance. They've proffered that the 10-foot of frontage will be dedicated to VDOT for the new sidewalk. They've proffered that a stub will be created to the neighboring office to the southeast, and lastly, that .152 acres of open space will be maintained by the HOA for aesthetics. Additionally, the applicant has proposed a cash contribution of $132.70 per unit, which staff has found to be legally acceptable and in accordance with our current proffer regulations. In summary, staff offers the following findings in favor. The project is generally consistent with the comp plan. The mixed-use land use area is intended to create a more dense form, which the applicant has proposed. Where possible, the applicant has proffered cash contributions towards capital facility impacts specifically attributable to this project. The project is an infill development project on an otherwise underutilized property with available utility connections. Staff found the following findings against. Apart from the commercial and office uses immediately adjacent, the remainder of the neighborhood, including the three homes to the rear of the site, are largely single-family residential homes. One of the goals in the mixed-use district is to provide infill development, but it should be sensitive to the context of the neighborhood. The bulk of this project tests the limits of neighborhood compatibility. Financially, as I mentioned before, the county's model indicates that the project will yield an annual deficit of approximately $22,500, and the applicant's model reports an annual contribution of about $2,000. As I mentioned before, the county's model is often lower due to the applicant's varying assumptions between the models. The applicant's inclusion of spin-off tax generation, notably job generation and additional taxation of the new residents' needs for goods and services, is one of the factors that contributes towards this difference. Lastly, both of the intersections of Hudgens Road are functioning at a level of Service E. No improvements are warranted by the small increase of trips proposed by this rezoning, and there is no expectation that this project will relieve the current cut-through traffic presently on Hudgens Road. Finally, based on the proposal's general consistency with the comprehensive plan and in consideration of the findings noted above, staff is recommending approval of the subject case with proffers dated April 9th, 2018.
Patrick, walk me through the sidewalk issue again in the right-of-way.
Sure. Note on this image here that there is a road coming in and a sidewalk coming in alongside of it. And hypothetically, if that road was going to be dedicated to VDOT, it would be dedicated with the road and the sidewalk. So, they would be, the front lot line, if you will, would be on the left side of the sidewalk, on the image before you.
In a typical situation?
In a typical situation. Not to say that this is atypical, it's just a little different. In this instance, however, that sidewalk and that road are not being dedicated to VDOT, so the property line is going to be along, rather than on the left side of the sidewalk, it's going to be on the left side of the road. So the build-to zone is going to be, basically, the distance of the sidewalk closer to the road. So approximately 5 to 7 feet closer to the road. So the applicants have requested that the county recognize that the build-to-zone requirement is still met by what they're proposing, but we have to recognize that the build-to-zone is, in this instance, effectively defined a little different.
So who's responsible for maintaining the sidewalk?
The applicant. The applicant, or, excuse me, the HOA that would be established on the property.
HOA, is that, so is, are there, is there going to be, but that's private, right? The sidewalk would be private?
It would be private, but it would get an easement over it to allow for-
Public access.
For public access.
So the public can use that sidewalk?
They could.
Okay. Is there, is there an escrow set up for the maintenance of that sidewalk? Should the county have to? Is that a, how do we handle that?
No. To my knowledge, there's not one that's set up. It's, no.
Okay.
It would ultimately become a zoning violation, but as part of the-
What would be a zoning violation, to not maintain it?
To not maintain it, but-
That's a, and that's a subjective review by our zoning administrator?
It would be based on complaints that we'd receive.
Based on complaints, okay.
But, but we do require as part of the establishment of the HOA that they provide us with a 10-year schedule of required improvements and set aside a funding in order to facilitate those improvements in the neighborhood.
So the funding is, so set aside is not in an escrow?
It's not in an escrow. It's, you know, it's all handled by the HOA.
All right.
And just for clarification, the sidewalk on the front of the property will be VDOT maintained?
Show me that. That's right there? And that's within the VDOT right-of-way?
It will be.
May I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Do these sidewalks connect to other sidewalks, or is this just the sidewalks in front of the development?
They are just sidewalks in front of the development.
Okay, thank you.
If I may ask, the interparcial connector, many cases before, that was driven by VDOT. Was that a request from the county?
That was more or less driven by VDOT as well.
So if this is private, why, why do they have a say?
In this instance, that got on our radar because the applicant will be requesting a, an exception to have their driveway on Hudgens Road closer than it should be to the driveway that exists for the office structure next door. So they'll be requesting something called an access management exception, when typically VDOT likes to see additional interparcial connections as a justification for such a request.
Yeah, I'm still confused why VDOT has jurisdiction here. They have no business telling a private landlord to put in an interparcial-
It is the access on Hudgens that they're concerned about.
But still, it's private property, right?
That is correct. It is private property.
Whatever, all right. Any other questions or comments for Patrick? Sorry. The applicant here, I guess? Charlie? Maybe you can help me, Charlie?
I'll do my best, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, other members of the Planning Commission, my name is Charlie Payne. The law firm, Herschel Fleischer, and we represent the applicant. It's always a pleasure to be in Spotsylvania County, and thank you for your time this evening, and thank you to staff for your presentation. I do have a PowerPoint. It's very brief, and just we'll go through some of the additional details of the project. If you can go to the next slide, please, Patrick. Again, as staff had noted, this project is a collection of six parcels, a little more than an acre. It is located along Hudgens Road, near the intersection of Route 1. The rezoning request is an R1 to an MU2. As staff had noted, this particular area of the county is, for future planning, is mixed-use, so that proposal is consistent with our purpose. We are proposing to develop 14 single-family attached units. As many of you may know, as staff had noted, we're adjacent on three sides to commercial uses, so the mixed-use component is consistent with the comprehensive plan for that purpose. A portion of the property, six of the townhouse units, do adjoining residential uses. That particular development is a fairly older development in the county. There is some redevelopment in that particular subdivision as well on the north side of the property. So this, again, is sort of another step in that direction of some redevelopment and locating some new housing stock. As staff had noted, single-family attached is allowed in MU2. We are preserving at least 15% of open space as required under the ordinance, and we anticipate, given the current market and success, if you will, at Lafayette Crossing, that the units will be constructed fairly quickly in about a couple of years. As I just noted, and staff noted, we border Sheehy Toyota to our west, Hudgens Road and Radley Properties, or Commercial Property, to our north, and to our south is a residential subdivision. There's three units, I believe, to our south, immediate south. To the east is the Central Virginia Housing Coalition. You may recall that that was also involved in a rezoning a few years ago, which did require sidewalks along Hudgens. So we would connect to those folks when we construct our sidewalks. In fact, I think their proffer requires them to build the sidewalks if adjoining property does develop. And again, there's a mix of residential and commercial uses, again, consistent with the comp plan, and we believe the impacts, especially with the landscaping and the fencing and buffering that we're providing, will mitigate impacts to our neighbors. Here's the generalized development plan. As staff had noted, Hudgens is to our right. Our entrance and access points will be off of Hudgens. You'll see the fencing, and I've got a better illustration for you to show you, the fencing and landscape buffering. And there's the key travelway, if you will, for accessing to the site. To our east, again, you'll see some extensive landscaping, additional parking, and of course, commercial office to our east as well. Get to the next slide. Here's a, here's a good illustration, I think, of the layout of the development. You'll see the entrance that we will be constructing into the site there off of Hudgens. We will be dedicating right-of-way about 10 feet in width, the long Hudgens, along with five feet for purposes of sidewalk. The private sidewalks that come into the site, there were some questions about, obviously, we will be providing a public easement, but it's to the benefit of the development to make sure those sidewalks are in good shape and maintained. We have proffered that we would establish an HOA and provide covenants, so the HOA and the board would govern and manage that. You know, the townhomes are going to be in a $300,000, $1,000 range, so we believe there's a lot of incentive to maintain that in a good order. You'll also see the landscaping along the western border and also the southern border, and within that landscaping internally, as staff had noted, there's an eight-foot-tall board-on-board fence that also includes, obviously, the improvements that staff had noted, including brick pillars. The garages are in the front of the townhouses, as there is also parking, driveway, and then the additional parking is there to the west. And you'll see, I'm sorry, if you can go back real quick. And the interparcial connection is there to the west, which connects to the commercial office, just to our immediate west. All right, Patrick, if you can go. There are no cultural resources or environmental resources on the site. As I'd stated, this project is consistent with the comprehensive plan. It is in the mixed land use district, which is intended to encourage dense development, flexible site design, and compatible built environment, traditional neighborhood development concepts, and public amenities, et cetera. Of course, as I'd stated, we're well within that intent and spirit. We're surrounded on three sides by commercial and one side by residential, and we're located within the primary development boundary, which encourages, obviously, the use of public utilities, which is also consistent with the comp plan. A little bit on the fiscal impact. We look, we see these homes, I'm sorry, they average of $250,000, which is consistent with Lafayette Crossing. Size of the units would be about 1,800 to 2,200 square feet. Also, these will include decks or possibly include decks. They're only on the first floor, so if we proffered that, they wouldn't be up on the second floor, sort of overlooking our neighbors, if you will. So they'll only be located on the first floor, and that's part of our proffers. You'll see that, you know, the construction of the development will yield 16 jobs off-site at full build-out and about $450,000 in annual employee earnings. Again, we look at not only the real estate taxes that are generated on the site, but also personal property taxes that are generated on the site, and also the spin-off of the spending that is generated from the site. And that's how we come up with our positive number, which is a very typical fiscal impact analysis versus just looking at property tax. Schools, which are within the attendance zone, are Spotswood Elementary, Battlefield Middle, and Massaponics. And as you heard, staff noted, although I think we add additional two schools to Massaponics, there's not a new school in the CIP, so therefore, under the current proffer legislation, no proffers are required. We're only generating about eight students from the site for purposes of what you can count. That's about, almost, yeah, a little more than a half a student per dwelling unit. And note that by our rate, there would be four students. And as staff noted, and as we concluded with the school system, there is existing adequate capacity to accommodate these, just very few students. I mean, this is a very small infill development, again, very consistent with the comp plan with very little impact. Transportation, again, access will be from Hudgens Road. You saw our entrance improvements. We're also dedicating five feet in width for sidewalk. We also will be dedicating 10 feet of right-of-way along Hudgens Road, and we're also providing the interparcial connection, as staff had noted. The generation, just during peak hours, six, basically about six trips during the AM and about seven, a little more than seven during the PM. So again, a very, very light trip generation, being as close as we are to the Route 1 intersection. My belief is most of the traffic would go that way. Public safety, again, part of the evaluation requirements for any rezoning is we have to evaluate roads, schools, public safety, and parks. As part of that analysis, we review the public safety impact. There'll be mental impact, again, this is a very small project. Fire Station 4 will serve the site, it's about one mile away, and as staff noted, we have proffered cash to offset the direct impacts of the project. Here are proffers. As staff had noted, again, we're dedicating 10 feet of right-of-way along Hudgens, which is about 1,500 square feet. We also will construct the stub road for the interparcial connection, which is everyone's favorite. Cash proffers to address both public safety and parks is also included. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate your time this evening.
Charlie, one, a couple of questions I have. On the storm warning management, I think the plan says potential below grounds, that's underneath the-
That's correct.
Parking lot. Where, if you had to put that in, where would the discharge be? Or is there an off-site?
Mark King, you want to answer? The civil engineer's here, can answer that real quick.
Mark King with Bowman Consulting, the civil engineer on the project. We would be looking at, towards the west, towards the car dealership. It's a fairly flat site. We're, we'll end up having a combination of some LIDs, some buyer retention, you know, some technology-based water quality measures as well, but that's, that's where we'd be looking to. Oh, it's very, yeah, it's very small.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Mark. Okay, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anybody sign up to speak? Anybody wish to speak on this application? Okay, thank you. When you come to the podium, you'll have- When you come to the podium, you'll have three minutes to speak. There's a light on the podium. When it turns yellow, you'll have one minute. I would ask that you wrap it up when the light turns red.
Lee Milstead, followed by Larry Gale.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Planning Commission. I'm a longtime resident of that neighborhood. I've been there almost forty years. I've seen a lot of changes. That particular property right next door started out as a house, and Lyndon White had a property there. He wanted to build a building, and he wanted to sit there and add on to one of the houses. He tore everything down except the center wall, came to the neighbors and wanted to put an addition to that house. Took everything down and built that monstrosity that's sitting there now, but the center wall to that house is still there. That was his addition. Then came, they wanted to rezone across the street. That became C3. They put the storage yard there. Then they came and wanted to rezone the office for Lyndon White to O1. That recently has happened. The property that's in question right now is a residential one. They've had it up for years as commercial, trying to sell it. Now, they couldn't sell it, so now they want to put multi-use in there and put fourteen townhouses. We're the ones who live there. We're the ones who have to look at it. There's no three-story townhouses in that area. They'll be looking down at us, but it doesn't even fit in the neighborhood. Why would you want to put a house or townhouses right in the middle of commercial? It doesn't make sense. The people there, they can raise their families and overlook Radley Chevrolet and watch them work on cars. I guess that's a good way to make a living and bring your children up. Hudgens Road is not actually up to specs. It is a driveway to a farm at one time, and they paved it, so the road is not even up to specs. Traffic on both ends, one side has lights, the other side doesn't. On Lafayette Boulevard in the evenings, is nothing but congestion trying to turn left going toward town. And you know Lafayette Boulevard is also congested in the evenings, going either way. So we've got to deal with that. I don't know what it's going to do to our property. It's going to affect the value of our property. Is this, I don't even know if this property will be subsidized. I have no idea right now. So no one's talked about that. The comprehensive plan, you're talking about multi-use. If you look at it, only certain parts of it is multi-use. The rest of it, they want commercial in there. So whoever was doing with the comprehensive plan must have had input to the people when they built, when they were developing the comprehensive plan. I don't know. The screening that they're talking about, an eight-foot screen is not going to stop a three-story townhouse. That screening is useless. We've still got to live with that. You want to put sidewalks out there? It only goes one block. They say they want to add on to it later on? Maybe later they will. If you let this go through right now, the property next door can be rezoned at a different time and put more townhouses, and it could just keep going and keep going and keep going. I do appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Larry Gale.
Thank you, sir. I've been living in Spotsylvania over fifty years. I've been living in Roseland, Subdivision, for twenty-three years. And one reason against this project because that little cut-through from Lafayette through Route 1, a lot of traffic. It's increasing every day. My opinion, Spotsylvania has plenty of roads. There's too many people, and that's going to only add to the problem. So y'all may choose to do as you want, and the board supervises, but when election time comes, now go to the voting booth, I'm going to choose as I please. Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Very well. I'll close the public hearing portion of it. Any other questions or comments on the application? Hearing now, I'll take a motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to thank Mr. White, Mr. Payne, Mr. Gale, Mr. Milstead for speaking, and I would like to make a motion to approve R17-0013.
May I have a second on the motion?
Second.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Moving on to the next item, Planning Commission bylaws discussion.
The Planning Commission reviewed changes to their bylaws at a prior meeting, and they've been through legal review. There were a few additional changes that came out of that review, and so they are ready for your adoption at this point in time. So rather than going through them, a lot of them are just cleanup, some of them are clarifications. We did include the section in there about people that wish to speak can state either their address or their voting district. That was a request of the Planning Commission. And we now have included in here the procedure followed if both our chairman and our vice-chairman are absent, which happened at the last meeting, so now we've incorporated that in here so that we can just simply look at our bylaws to refresh our memories. So at this point in time, if there are any questions on these, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, they're ready for the Planning Commission to adopt.
Very well. Any questions, comments? Hearing now, I'll take a motion.
Second.
Have a second. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Very good. Thank you. Motion passes. Wanda, I guess you're up next on the work session?
Yes.
Yep.
The focus of this work session is population growth over time. Understanding the history of population growth and projections into the future are foundational components in developing a comprehensive plan to guide growth and development in the county for twenty years into the future. Looking back, significant increases in population began in the 1970s. Between 1970 and 1980, the population in the county more than doubled. Between 1980 and 1990, which is when this graphic begins, the growth rate was 66.7%. The next ten-year period from 1990 to 2000 was 57.5%, and then it lowered to 35.4%, bringing us to 2010. So you can see the fairly sharp increase in population over the time period from 1990 to 2010. Then we reset at the census point at 2010, at a population of 122,978. You can see here the trend since 2010, the angle of that trend is significantly less steep. The population certainly has been growing, but it has not grown at those tremendous levels that we saw in the 70s, 80s, 90s, and 2000s. If the county does experience annual growth rates similar to this last year, which is 1.24%, the ten-year growth rate, projecting this out, right now I have it up through 2017, projecting it out then to 2020, our growth rate for the ten-year period from 2010 to 2020 would be about 12.3%. Looking then at housing units since 1990, you can see that same similar trend in the severity or the angle here in the table. You can see the sharp increase, and then it begins to gradually, more gradually increase once you hit that 2010 point. The blue stripe up here is single-family detached units, and then we've got single-family attached and apartments. Here, they're roughly equal over time. And then in 2018, they are very, very close. We've got about 40,142 single-family detached units in the county, and 4,238 single-family attached, and then 4,234 apartments. So those are almost neck and neck in terms of the numbers. This chart shows the annual growth rates from 2001 on. While the population has increased each year on a yearly basis, the rate of growth has varied. As of July 1, 2017, the estimated population in the county is 133,033, and that's a U.S. Census estimate. And the growth rate from 2016 to 2017 was 1.24%, as I mentioned. This is the second year of an increase here. You can see from 2015, an increase from .89, which was a fairly low growth rate year, up to 1.06% annual increase, and then a 1.24% annual increase. So we've got two-year trend trending up in higher growth rates. At a recent, but looking back, you can see back to 2007, these growth rates have hovered around one point, excuse me, one percent. We've got 1.04, .9, .8, 1.17. So they have varied over time. Each of these years, we did see an increase in population, but it's varied hovering around one percent. At a recent Planning Commission meeting, a question was raised about the 2% growth-rate goal that was adopted in the 2002 comprehensive plan, and it was removed in the 2013 update. As you can see, the impetus for establishing a, what was intended to be a goal as a ceiling of 2%, the impetus you can see back here in the early 2000s, when you had 5.37 and 5.66% growth rates occurring, and then, as you think back to those numbers I was reading in the 90s, we had tremendous growth and with it, the requirements to build schools and other infrastructure at a very rapid rate. So looking into the future, the Weldon Cooper Center for Public Service provides population projections for Virginia jurisdictions. Their current estimate for Spotsylvania County is actually less than the census estimate. Theirs is at 131,549 versus the 133,033. So that's a difference of about 1,484 people, which is approximately the increase that we've been seeing per year. I believe that their 2020 projection is going to prove low. They've got here showing Spotsylvania County being a faster-growing jurisdiction into the future. This shows 2020 projection, 2030 projection, and 2040 projection. And at 2020, they're at 135,026. So if we took the current number that Weldon Cooper believes Spotsylvania's at at the 131,000 and applied that 1.24% annual growth rate to bring us up to 2020, we'd reach 136,504, and they've got us at 135,026. So I am skeptical about the 2020 rate, but going on from there, the 2030 and the 2040 rate may be accurate, in so much as you can look that far into the future. One of the reasons that these continued increases in population and potentially higher growth rates in the future are supported is also based on Weldon Cooper information. This graphic here shows the center of population in Virginia. So in 1940, the center of population was in, I can't read what that's called, Cumberland, was in Cumberland County, and since then, it has marched to the east, and then it turned in 1970 and started marching towards the north. So here we are at about 2020. It's in Northern Caroline County. By 2030, they've got it in Spotsylvania, and in 2040, in Spotsylvania as well. So population of these counties up here, as you can see in this chart, these are the fastest-growing counties, are the ones in the dark orange.
Wanda, what is that, when you cite the center of population, what does that tell us? Is that, what can I glean from that?
It's the geographic center of population. So there's equal population from this point all the way around. So high concentrations of people in this area, lower concentrations of people in this area.
So in respect to planning purposes, land use, and those types of things, that type of information tells us we need to be looking into more of our, into our plan in terms of more of our rural areas? Is that, I'm trying to get an assumption or a conclusion out of this that...
Yeah, the conclusion that I could take from this is, we're not going to see negative growth rates. There are other jurisdictions in the county, or excuse me, in the Commonwealth that are experiencing negative growth rates or no growth. And with the fact that the center of population keeps moving north, this area here is going to continue to see positive growth and probably higher growth rates into the future, if this trend continues. Higher concentrations of population, so if I understand your question correctly, you know, if we want to preserve a portion of the county as rural, you know, we need to plan for that. We need to ensure that we're accommodating the growth and planning for the infrastructure for those people within a reasonable growth area.
That's exactly what I'm saying is...
Say something. Yes, he's exactly right on that, and so are you, that I find it's very hard to, for infrastructure to be focused on where the development is going. For some reason, you have the backups on Route 3, you have the backups on Route 1. They are our growth areas. They really are our growth areas. And it seems as though that there's not enough focus being put on those areas that need to be, and infrastructure. Now, what is your suggestion on that? Because you're exactly right. It's going to continue to move this away. What do we do? And everybody will say, well, you all are laying the growth. Growth is going to come. But we are not ahead of the growth as we should be, because where? Why?
And I think a big part of that answer is in the comprehensive plan. As we go through this update, I think that the transportation element is going to be key. One of the, we have a thoroughfare plan list, but it's a big list of projects that in the end has a high-dollar amount to it that is not prioritized. So I, you know, I think that during this update, what, one of my goals is, and I hope the Planning Commission as well, is to prioritize that list, determine which projects are critical to move forward with. That way, the money ends up being funneled towards those projects sooner rather than later, get the ones out there that are going to have the biggest impact. And so that, that's one of the approaches that we can take. And then also just looking at our public facilities element and being sure that our levels of service standards are appropriate and up to date, and then programming when those facilities need to come online to serve the population.
Yes, well, you're definitely correct on that. Just the other night, I was in a public place at an event, and there were over 200 people there, and a lot of them did live, do live in the rural area part. And their comments was, well, I don't know what you all are going to do with all this growth. The traffic is terrible. Well, there are the, some of us who live in where the traffic is at, you know, that's the primary area. That is a growth area, and I guess we get used to it. So how do we educate the public also to know that we need to focus on the area that we're going to have the growth, the primary settlement areas? Because that's where we get not, you know, and they say, well, you all are laying all of this growth. Well, as this stated again, that's the primary settlement area. Now, if we want to change, and we want to go to Livingston, or we want to go to Berkeley, or somewhere like that, and we're going to, we can't spread all this growth in those areas because it's not feasible. Am I correct?
That would not be sustainable, no.
That's where I'm coming from. Okay. So how do we get across to the public that we're going to have this growth in those areas? But prioritizing where the money, the funding has to be focused at, is in those areas that we're going to have the growth? And what do we do about it?
Well, I think during the comprehensive plan update process, as we have public outreach, I think that that's a key component, that we can work into that public outreach. And then just find out, you know, people that buy into rural areas, we hear the comments at public hearings, I bought into a rural area, I... We hear the comments at public hearings. I bought into a rural area. I knew that I wouldn't have all these amenities. So, what is the trade-off? What, what, what's the minimum level of amenities or public facilities that, that people are, are willing to have in their different areas of the county? As a trade-off for having that pastoral rural surrounding.
Exactly, exactly. But I think, believe that they're so shocked when they go to Route One and the Massapaliks area. They go on Route Three where they have the growth. I think that they've been in the rural area and when they hit there, they're so overcome. You know, by this, and I can understand that. But we need to, I, I just think that we need to prioritize and focus on those areas a little more than what we're doing. Okay? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So, this chart brings together the past and the future to show five-year increments of growth. So, beginning in, in this one, I began in two thousand and five, knowing that that was a high point. Looking at twenty-five point nine percent growth. That then dropped by twenty-ten to almost seven percent growth. That continued to drop. Twenty twenty, the projection is at three point eight percent. This is according to Weldon Cooper and as I said, I'm a little skeptical about their twenty twenty projections. I, I think it's probably going to be a little bit higher than that. But then they do have it spiking back up again in twenty five, twenty twenty-five. So, what I, I think realistically what might happen is that this is less. Of a drop and this is probably a little bit less of a rise. And then continuing from there, looking out, you know, we're at nine, eight, seven, six and a half, six percent growth rate for a five-year period out to twenty forty-five. Switching back to housing, these two graphics show recent uptick in single-family lots created and in residential building permits. I track final plats as they're approved. Basically, at that point, they're picked up and recorded the clerks, clerk of the court's office and they become lots. So, in twenty eighteen, I, you, you can see we've, we've already got quite a few. I don't know exactly what this number was. It's a little over a hundred. But last year, we had almost five hundred. The year before, five hundred and fifty lots. These are single-family lots. And then the prior years was a little bit less, but the definitely, I, I think this year, we're probably going to be up close again to that five hundred mark. Being created. And then looking at the dwelling units, these are single-family townhouse, apartment, single-wide, double-wide. One thing I do note in here is that when building permits are issued for apartments, it's, it's for the, the building. So, one, one apartment is one building. It's not the actual units within the apartment. So, so this is a little bit, you can't take this as raw numbers, one per one unit. But it, it does show in twenty seventeen, an increase from twenty sixteen, five hundred and sixty-four permits to twenty seventeen, it's seven fifteen. And then if you just look at the numbers here, sixty-one in, in January was higher than what we'd seen in the past. Forty-seven is higher, sixty-eight is higher. So, you know, it looks like this, this is probably going to be up in that seven, eight hundred amount by the end of the year. So, we definitely are seeing increases in lots, buildings, and that's going to translate to increases in population and probably a little higher growth rate next year. Yes. Wanted to also bring to your attention a study that was completed in twenty seventeen by the Fredericksburg Area Association of Realtors.
Wanda, just, just one minute. If you can go back to that other slide, I just want to ask one question. On, on these, these are building permits that, that have been approved, right?
Right.
Correct? That's the number. But, but actually those applications or those developments were approved back several years ago. Am I correct?
Right. And what I'm trying to show here is that the actual impact point when, when you actually build the building. So, it might have been approved as part of a plat or rezoning a few years ago, but now it's hitting the ground.
Right. Okay, correct. Thank you.
And the same thing with the lots. That's why I chose this, the, the recording of the lots, because that's the point where they can be built on.
Is there a correlation we're seeing between the percentage growth of permits being issued to population growth? So, if we have a five percent year of population growth, are we seeing a four percent, eight percent? Have we seen that correlation?
I'd have to go back and look at that. I haven't done that. Right. So, so this is the housing study prepared by the Fredericksburg Area Association of Realtors, dates to June twenty seventeen. And what they did was look at housing needs and provided a forecast into the future. And their conclusion is that we're going to need about fourteen thousand, four hundred and forty-five new housing units over the next fifteen years. To house new workers, both local and commuters. So, that's what this graphic shows. They, they divided up into multi-year segments. This one being twenty seventeen to twenty twenty-two. With three thousand, two hundred and thirty-three, but then increasing in the next segment from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-seven to four thousand, three hundred. And then in the, the final segment, they've bumped that up to almost seven thousand. Yeah, they, they based their, they based their projections on a, I wish I had that handy. There, it was a, it was basically a jobs projection that they used. New jobs in the area and these are the houses they're need to fill.
Does that, that number, the fourteen thousand, four forty-five over the next fifteen years, does that include all the ones that have already been approved? That just haven't been developed yet? I mean, because we.
It doesn't. It doesn't. They just, they just went from housing units that we actually have on the ground as of, I think it was twenty, I think their data went to twenty sixteen. So, housing units that are actually constructed and able to be occupied at that point in time and then projected forward. So, no, they didn't take into account what's already been approved but not yet built. And I think that's my, might be my next slide.
Okay, because I, I was going to say, I remember another presentation, I, I can't remember the number, but I mean, there was thousands of, of homes that, that's already been approved. That just hadn't been built. Am I correct?
Correct. And I'll just jump ahead since you asked the question to this slide. I keep a table that documents the units that have been approved through either rezoning or buyright subdivisions. That are larger than ten lots. I, I don't account for smaller divisions like family divisions and there are vacant lots and established subdivisions that are not yet built on. So, there's other lots out there that, but, but this is the, the majority of them. These are through the rezoning and the subdivision process. And this was last updated. What I do is I put every time a new rezoning or a new plat is approved. I, I put it in the table with the number of units. And then two times a year, I go through the building permits and find all the final building permits for each of those subdivisions. And I subtract them as built. So, that was last updated in October. So, I think that probably around fourteen thousand is probably a good number at this point, rather than fourteen thousand, seventy-one. But that is the number of lots that have been enabled essentially through the rezoning process or the subdivision approval process. That have not yet been, gone through the process to be platted and built on. So, that does correlate pretty well with.
Wanda, I did, actually going back to that slide was perfect. However, the mix of, of multifamily, single-family are not.
Right.
Even close.
Yes.
And obviously, that's, that's FAR's study versus what we actually have. So, not that they need to be close. My question is, what is that mix? You know, what, what is a healthy mix of single-family detached townhomes, apartments? What, what is a good rule of thumb, if you will, moving forward? Because right now, it seems like we are heavily burdened on the apartments as we saw on the slide after this one. And they're going up like crazy around here. And I keep seeing, keep hearing everybody saying that we're at a deficit. And I do tour some of them and most of them are at ninety-six, ninety-five, eighty-six percent occupancy when I'm talking to the, to the sale staff, the rental staff. But do we need that many? Is that, is that a good mix? Are we catching back up? Just kind of curious.
I, I think that's a very good question and I don't have an answer for you. The, the best thing that we had that was recent was this Fredericksburg Area Association of Realtors study that they did where they looked at these types of units. But I, I, I don't know beyond that. What, what is the right answer to that question? So, just to jump back really quick, this slide simply shows what they projected. The price points would need to be for the workers. So, this one is owner occupied units. So, thirty-six percent looking at less than a two hundred thousand dollar price tag. Going around to the largest piece of the pie at forty-eight percent between two hundred thousand and almost four hundred thousand. And then once you get up here to six hundred thousand or more, only three point two percent of the population demands that in the future as they project. And then in terms of renter occupied units, the same type of chart here showing less than one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars a month rent would be almost sixty percent of the population. And then a twenty-nine point seven percent at a, at a little higher rent between one thousand, two hundred and fifty and seventeen forty-nine. And then the more premium ones, as you go up here, you can see a less of a demand. So, what I did here is I take the population associated with these units. And I bring it forward to this table and plug it in and it's, it's the yellow area. So, if we were to grow based on our twenty seventeen, I, I use the census estimate as the base. If we grow at a one percent annual growth rate, we'll build out those fourteen thousand units around twenty thirty-seven, twenty thirty-eight. If we grow at two percent, we'll bu, build out those units around twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight. And then looking here, I put in the Weldon Cooper projections in the five-year increments. And this shows us building out between twenty thirty-one and twenty thirty-two. So, this, this kind of is another check for me that these Weldon Cooper Center projections might be pretty good. That we're at a probably a, you know, a one point four percent growth rate here to hit this, this point. So, as I said, I, I believe that the Weldon Cooper Center projections are a good basis for us as we move forward with the comprehensive plan update. The annual growth rate is expected to trend upward, but not reach levels of the early 2000s. My recommendation is rather than establishing a growth rate goal, which again, would be a policy in the comprehensive plan that's, that's difficult then to implement. The, and it's a, it's a complex undertaking to try to figure out what is the right balance of growth. To what you can support and what that dollar amount is. So, what I would suggest instead is that as we move forward with the comprehensive plan update, we focus on goals and policies that are related to adequate public, public facilities and levels of service. So that we can measure as the county grows, are we keeping up with the demands in our public facilities? And that, I think, would be a, a better approach than trying to set a growth rate goal that is difficult to, to enforce essentially. And that's the end of my presentation.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Wanda. That was, yeah, go ahead, Ms. Carter.
Wanda, do the school, of a school, going to give you projections also on what they can handle at a growth rate?
Yes, we'll, we'll work with the schools through the update process to do that. I haven't done that to this point though, no.
Now, because when we go into a comprehensive plan, the first thing and the second thing is transportation and schools. What are we going to have to build? What we're going to, and I believe that when we went to the two percent at the time, it was, the schools were included. And from the information that we received from them and the funding that we had coming in at that time through the tax base. That it was, that's what we based our two percent growth rate. That's what we felt like that we needed and that's what we felt like that we could handle. And that's the reason, if we don't have all players involved to help us, you know, I, I, I just don't, I think it's fair and necessary, let me put it that way. That we have that from them.
Yes. What, one of the next tasks as we move forward is that we're going to be reaching out to each of the agencies and departments. That have a place within our public facilities element of the comprehensive plan to have them review what's in the twenty thirteen plan. Review the level of service standards, look at their future needs that are listed and help us update those. So, that will include the schools and fire and rescue sheriff, parks and recreation. So, so it'll, it'll encompass those. So, that, that is a step that will occur within the next probably couple of months.
You missed one.
I didn't list them all, no.
Social services.
Oh, social, well, that's, that's true.
You know, recently.
Right.
Recently, we've heard, wow, you know, we need new buildings. We, and, and then we're going to need a new building. Because we got all of these people coming in, all of these services, you know, okay, I, I, let's have it. Let's see what it is.
That's a good point. We, we don't cover every single facility in our comprehensive plan right now. And social services is one that's not specifically included. So, we need to consider if there are other facilities that we should have in our comprehensive plan with this update.
Absolutely, because we get hit with it later, you know? And, and expect decisions to be made. And that's a big part of it. So, please do.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, right, go ahead.
Wanda, we're looking at residential on this aspect of it. Is there a study out there from the commercial side? Because as more and more, you know, Toys R Us an example, nationally and of course locally as well. More and more cold shells are sitting out there, haven't been developed. More brick and mortar stores are, are going to close up. I, I think it's just a, what the future is going to hold. I'd be interested to see if we have a study out there that tells us what we have commercially zoned, what buildings are there. What a good mix is for us to expand in. Because one, they go hand in hand. Typically, commercial lags behind residential, whatever it does. Residential goes up, commercial kind of follows it. Residential goes down, shortly after, commercial tends to go down. And I'd be interested to see that as well as sort of look at comp, comp plan. Because I think that's a very big, that's important aspect to, especially when it comes to anything that's creating jobs. You know, industrial or bigger employment centers that may come to the area.
And you, going back, that's an excellent, excellent point that you bring in there. Because I remember that it's supposed to be seventy thirty. Now, is that seventy thirty for each development or is that seventy thirty overall?
Overall, yes.
Is that working? Do you think that's right?
It, it, it's closer to eighty twenty.
Right.
Yes. It's closer to eighty twenty. And I do have some information on that. So, that, that I do have on our list for discussion with this update, whether that is a, a valid measure. Or if it should be replaced with something, a different mix, eighty twenty, or if it just should be replaced with something completely different overall.
Yeah, because I, I'll be very honest with you. When I was on the Board of Supervisors and sitting here, I, I look at growth. And when we approve rezonings and et cetera, I look at that, that if we want businesses in this county, that we've got to have growth to support it. And I mean, so where are we? And as I've stated to you all many times, I'll never forget, before we got Walmart. And we sat down with them and worked and worked and worked and they wouldn't come here for a while. Because why? Why you won't come here? Because you haven't got enough growth, you know? And that was Fertisburg just going ding, 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 bringing up all of those sales tax. And, but however, we, we couldn't do that until the growth occurred there. And so, it's a good point that you bring there, absolutely. Thank you.
Excuse me. So, you don't require any action tonight?
No, I just wanted to bring this to you for informational purposes, set the stage for future discussions.
Yep. Yes, Ms. Carter. Yep. Yes, Ms. Carter. No. Well, you're all set? Okay. All right, very good. Thank you. Thank you, Wanda. That was very informative. So with that, we'll move on to new business. I don't know if this is the right agenda item, but in a previous planning commission meeting, we talked about these committees, these subcommittees that are part of our bylaws. Wanda, I would like to talk to you about that, especially in regard to, I believe the comprehensive plan was one of them.
Yes.
And how, if we need that subcommittee, or if we're gonna work together as a panel. But we'll hold that for another day. Any other new business?
No.
Very well, we'll move on to public comment. If we have folks that want to speak this evening, the same rules apply, three minutes. With the green light on the podium, when it turns to yellow, you'll have one minute. I would ask that you wrap it up when it turns to red. So if there's anybody that wishes to speak.
I have Dave Hammond, followed by Richard Janelle.
Good evening. My name is Dave Hammond. I live in the Livingston District. Tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of the concerned citizens of Fawn Lake and Spotsylvania County related to the special use permit for the proposed mega solar power plant. It is, as you know, an extraordinary and precedent-setting, not only for Spotsylvania, but for Virginia and the entire East Coast. As you know, we have raised numerous concerns about this proposed project, including a detailed summary that was provided to you on February 26. Last week, we updated that document summarizing our concerns and provided you with a new document that describes conditions that we think should be included in the county code, special use permits, or policies and guidelines. You should have received a packet with printed copies of these documents, as well as an email with electronic copies. That's if you got an email. We also included an updated version of the geosir report on hydrology and soil. Note that this information was also distributed to all of the county supervisors and several members of the county staff. Please let me know if you didn't receive this information, and we'll get it to you. Last week, many of us attended the Board of Supervisors meeting during the public comment portion of their meeting. We asked them to immediately deny the S-Power applications, if procedurally possible, and at a minimum, place a hold on any and all solar applications. To be clear, we were not asking the county to deny the applicants their due process consideration of their application. However, it is clear that the applications are seriously deficient and cannot be implemented as proposed without inflicting harm. A clear example is harm to the local aquifer that would be caused by a facility of this magnitude. Our statements were directed towards stopping a wasteful expenditure of county resources on an infeasible project plan. We all recognize that there's a lot of work to do to prepare the county for its first solar power plant. County policies, regulations, and guidelines need to be revised to address this new type of facility. We talked about the citizen committee. They didn't want to do the citizens committee. We understand that. Some of the supervisors commented on our research recommendations and encourage us to continue our efforts to support the county. We want to let you know that that is exactly what we intend to do. We will continue to provide you with additional information in the coming weeks and months. In conclusion, we know that the Board of Supervisors, the Planning Commission, and the... Oh, I'm sorry, I'm out of time. I was going to commend you on your work and ask you to continue with us on this process. We'll continue to support you. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Richard Janelle, and I reside in the Livingston District. My comments concern the proposed 500-megawatt solar power plant to be built in Spotsylvania County. We've done extensive research on the 10 largest photovoltaic solar power facilities in the U.S. If built, the proposed Spotsylvania site would be the fifth largest in the U.S. It would, however, be the first and only one of its size as regards several important characteristics. The Spotsylvania facility would be the largest in the eastern U.S. by far. It would be the only one with residential areas surrounding the site. The only one that puts the stability of a local aquifer at risk. The only one where the heat island effect may be of consequence to local residents. The only one where stormwater runoff and erosion can pollute streams and rivers. The only one where stormwater retention ponds and drainage ditches are even needed. The only one that involves public health risks from open burning, biosolids, and disease-bearing fly and mosquito infestations. The only one where a lightning strike, tornado, earthquake, or other natural disaster could create a large-scale hazmat site in close proximity to populated areas. The only one where negative impact on residential property values is a concern. And the only one where decommissioning, disposal, and recycling of solar panels and land reclamation is really even an issue. The reason the current 10 largest solar facilities in the U.S. do not have the same problematic characteristics is because they are all located in remote desert areas of California, Arizona, and Nevada, distant from residential areas, and where average annual rainfall is a scant 3 to 6 inches. By comparison, the U.S. averages 39 inches annually. The only way people will ever know if there is a large-scale damage at one of these sites is if they see it in the news. And if the owner-operator abandons a site when it becomes obsolete, no real harm is done. Obviously, there are very good reasons why your counterparts in California, Arizona, and Nevada were willing to permit the facilities to be built where they are. Such is not the case in Spotsylvania. You have a lot of work to do and some very tough decisions to make to ensure due diligence is done. In order to do due diligence, you must have detailed plans from the applicant and independent studies and analysis that address the specific concerns and issues we have previously brought to your attention. It is important to remember in this regard that the proposed solar facility is an issue for all Spotsylvania County, not just the Livingston District. Given the many unknowns and risks involved, I know the health and well-being of Spotsylvania residents is your first and foremost priority. Thank you.
Thank you.
Judy Janelle, followed by Irv Boiles.
I'm Judy Janelle, also Livingston District. And I have focused the last few months here on health risks. And I want to talk about a controlled burn. There's still discussion of having a smaller controlled burn, pit burns, and so forth. Unfortunately, the smoke penetrates the lungs, deepens the lungs. And for children, they inhale more oxygen per weight than we do as adults. So they also inhale more smoke. The damaged lungs, pulmonary system, cardiovascular system, and it can cause premature death. Now, you can't just wear a dust mask. You have to wear a P-100 respirator mask. And I don't know if any of you have ever worn one. They're more difficult to breathe in. Children going outside, they're not likely to keep them on. They go to the bus stop. Once they walk out of your door towards a bus stop, you kind of have no control. And those masks, if it's hard to breathe, off they'll probably go. I mean, that's, if you watch coats, kids often arrive at school without their winter coat that they left home in. So as far as mosquitoes and drainage ditches, that's miles of drainage ditches. And you get standing water, stagnant water. That's where the larva for the mosquitoes, they breed. The CDC has sent out yet another notice saying you have got to get the stagnant water treated for mosquitoes. Problem is, if there's any chance of runoff, overflow from rain, that, you know, you've already got water in the ditches, anything you treat then goes to the watershed, or has a potential. And the site has an angle like this, but it also angles this way. So you've got runoff going this way, runoff going this way, with streams on both here and here. So, moving to biosolids. You probably heard about all the deaths in California from the flu. The deaths were actually not from the flu virus, but for something called MRSA, which is methicillin-resistant staph aureus. That is present in biosolids. So these people had been exposed, didn't necessarily, weren't ill from it at that point, but they had it in their body. When they got the flu, they were dead within 24 to 48 hours. So MRSA is present in all the biosolids now. It's just really prevalent. So it's something to keep in mind. Also, the person who had Ebola in Dallas that later went to the hospital there, he was at home using his apartment's toilet facilities, went into the municipal sewage. So that Ebola virus was part of the biosolids of Dallas. Just something to keep in your mind for the future. These things did not used to be present, but they are now. So I want to also look at the water supply. And Virginia, we had a drought from 1969 to 19... Pardon me, 1962 to 1971. We had another severe drought in January. We had a moderate drought in 2011. The reason I bring this up, we've got the aquifer. But it's also important to realize that if S-Power requests to use water from the reservoirs, we were just in a severe drought in January from not getting enough precipitation over the winter. We've got a plan ahead.
Your time is up, ma'am, if you remember. Thank you.
My name is Irv Boiles. I live at Fawn Lake, Livingston District. You've heard concerns about the effects on the aquifer. I just want to call your attention to today's Freelance Star opinion section, big article, "Drought: Water Table Demands Plague State." And what it records is that about 155 millions of gallons of groundwater is taken daily from the Potomac aquifer. This year has been abnormally dry as conditions prevailed to about a third of Virginia, affecting more than 4.0 million. 4.0 million people live in eastern state, part of the state. And currently, what they're measuring is that this area is under what they call a watch list because of the amount of groundwater that's being depleted. The scant rainfall, coupled with increasing demands on our water table caused by new residential and commercial development, can create real problems for these folks that are living in these areas. The... So those people in the Piedmont area, which includes us, is in this watch list area. The bottom line to the article is what I want to call your attention to. "It's easy to make Virginia's water resources taken for granted, especially when public officials are trying to attract more economic growth. But water should be a major consideration as the Commonwealth and the local localities grapple with the pressures of more commercial and residential development." That relates directly to our concerns with the development of the solar farm. Thank you for your service. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Going once. Thank you very much. We appreciate the input. At this moment-
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd just like to make one announcement to the benefit of those of you that are interested in the S-Power case. We have concluded our initial review of their application, and our comment letter is available on the county website at the same location where all their application materials are. So you're welcome to review it there, and please spread the word to your friends and neighbors.
Thank you, Wanda. If there's nothing else, I will take a motion at this point to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor, say aye. Imposed. Thank you very much.